Good evening. We'll call to order the city commission meeting for El Dorado, June 3rd, 2019. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hayes.
President.
Commissioner Guthrie.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Badway.
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
Present.
Invocation. We have Mother Christine Gilson from Trinity Episcopal Church to lead us in prayer tonight.
Let us pray. Gracious and life-giving God, you draw us together in communities to work for the good of all people. We thank you for those who consent to serve on this city commission. We thank you for all the women and men who work in the offices and the public places of this city. We pray especially that you will keep them and all public officials and employees in all communities safe from violence and harm. We pray that any who are troubled may find help and nonviolent ways to cope. We pray that this city commission of El Dorado will continue to set an example of civility, justice, and fairness for all citizens. May there be peace on earth, and may it begin here. In the name of the God of love and peace, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Ryser, join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Personal appearances, not having any public comment. Anyone from the audience wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Item six. One item in our consent agenda which would be the minutes from May 20th. Any questions or comments from the commission on the consent agenda? Are none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. With no old business, we'll move to new business. First thing is our 2018 financial audit. We'll let, I think we have with us Ms. Colonel Lynn of Beaver Tran and Company to talk to us about our audit process.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for allowing me a few moments on your agenda this evening. The first thing I want to do is to apologize. I had a box in my office that had all of these reports that I was bringing to you this evening, and it was one of those days, and I ran out of my office to come down here this evening and walked right past the box, and about halfway down here, I realized that I left it there. So, I do apologize. I'm happy to leave this report with you if you want to look at it, but we will mail those, we'll FedEx that box to you tomorrow so that you'll have them as soon as possible. So, I will, I did, luckily, I called back to the office, and Dusty, who is the manager on the audit, was still at the office when I called, and he called Tammy, and they were able to print at least the smaller version of the report that I will be going through with the conclusions, and you have that in front of you, so that you at least have that. So what I'd like to do is to start going through the conclusions from the audit, which is what you have there in that report. Our responsibility, and I'm starting right behind the table of contents. Our responsibility under auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America are that we perform the audit so that we can conclude with an opinion on whether the financial statements are free of material misstatement. In doing that, we perform the audit so that we, we perform the audit so that we can, excuse me, we perform the audit with the objective of concluding whether or not the financial statements are free of material misstatement. Procedures that we perform include auditing the numbers, the financial statement information, we look at policies and procedures, and internal controls, and a variety of other things that allow us to form that conclusion. We were able to have unmodified opinions on the financial statements, which is the form of opinion that you should be looking for. It is the opinion that does state that in our opinion, the financial statements are free of material misstatement. We did also perform the audit in accordance with government auditing standards. Those standards are because of the federal dollars that you receive, and that just requires that we have some additional standards for independence and some other procedures on compliance regarding grants and contracts. The results of those standards did not, did not result in any findings. In addition, Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide requires that we perform procedures relating to statutory compliance, and so we performed our audit in accordance with those as well. As I indicated, we did perform the audit in accordance with accounting, to look for accounting policies and practices. This year, we did have one new governmental accounting standards board adoption, number 75, accounting and financial reporting by employers for post-employment benefits other than pensions. This resulted in new standards for recognizing and measuring liabilities, deferred outflows, resources, deferred inflows in resources, and expenditures for other post-employment benefits, for the other post-employment benefit liabilities. And this is the third in a series of liabilities that have been recorded on the city's books. We started with the pension liability, if you remember, a couple of years ago, and then we had other post-employment liabilities for health insurance benefits, and now disability, the disability benefits that come through capers. So, we've been adding a few over the years. This is the smallest liability that we've reported, but, and hopefully the last, but this is similar to the ones that we've added over the last couple of years. Other things that we look for, any significant or unusual transactions, if we identified anything in that area, we would bring it to your attention, and there was nothing, nothing that fit into that category that we need to bring to your attention. We also look for things that would be management's judgment or considered to be an accounting estimate. There are a few that we would consider to be significant estimates in the financial statements of the city. Those are included on the table that is pages four and five of this document. Those include the accrued self-insurance claims, the water storage space, the net OPEB liabilities, and the net pension liabilities. So we review the accounting policy, policies that the city has in place for these liabilities, and the estimation process that is used to record the liability, and we test that process, and we test the liability and the estimate that's recorded, and conclude on that liability and that estimation, and the results of that are that, that we believe that management's estimate is reasonable. We did have some audit adjustments that were proposed during the audit process, and those, those audit adjustments, according to this, they're attached. They are not attached because they were a part of the packet that didn't, that wasn't, what was in, it's in the box back in my office. And because of the, because of the fact that we had to have it emailed down, they did not get attached. But the audit adjustments, there's really only, there are seven on the list, but a couple of those are what we call client-prepared. They're just on the list because they were provided to us after we started the audit, so we include them because they're, they are needing to be adjusted to the trial balance that was originally provided to us, but they were provided by Tammy and her team. And the, but the others that are on the list were ones that were identified during the audit process. We also had what we call uncorrected misstatements, which are just adjustments that we identified during the audit process, but because they were immaterial to the overall financial statements, we did not actually make the adjustments into the financial statements, but we do provide them in the, in the packet for your information, but those are all considered to be immaterial. Other things we would bring to your attention, any issues or problems that were identified during the audit process, disagreements with management about any aspect of the audit process, any, any information that we requested for the audit that wasn't provided, any consultations with other accountants about any information for the audit or conclusions, significant issues that were discussed with management, or any other difficulties. Those would all be things that we would discuss with you or bring to your attention, because those could be indications of other more serious issues, and we would be sure to bring them to your attention to make sure you were aware of those. We had no issues or anything that would fit into that category that we need to bring to your attention. Everything went very well during the audit process, and the timing of the conclusion of this and the finalization of the audit report is earlier than we've, than we've completed the audit in any other year, so that's a good, a good indication of the, of how well the audit went. Tammy Schaefer and her team were very well prepared for us, and the audit process went very well, and we do want to commend her and her team for the hard work that they go through to prepare, to prepare for the audit, not just in the short bit of time before we're here and while we're here, but the year-long process that they go through, because it is, to produce information that creates a report that's as thick as this one is, I'm not sure what I know is on there, to produce a report this big, and the information that is in this report is really a year-long process, because it's certainly a lot of information and a lot of process that they need to go through. So, so we do thank you, Tammy and your team. We did have two significant deficiencies that we did identify during the audit process, and those are written into the financial statement document. The first one is a significant deficiency for adjusting journal entries, because we did have adjusting journal entries during the audit process. Our audit standards require that we report that as a significant deficiency. The second one is a significant deficiency for, for the procurement process. We did a testing of the procurement process. We tested five items that were subject to the bid process, and four of those did not follow the procurement policy. And so we identified that as a significant deficiency, and, and the deficiency that's written up in the report does have management's response and a corrective action plan for that, and the corrective action plan is for discussion with staff at the department level, and the city will be following its own internal procurement policy to ensure compliance with procurement requirements going forward. And the last item in this packet is management's representation letter. This letter is required by our audit standards to have certain things in writing that we discussed during the audit process, in writing from management to us as the auditors. These, it's quite lengthy letter, as you can see, you have it there in the information that you have. This information is a lot of good financial information that we discussed during the audit process, and things that are underlying the accounting and financial reporting, and so we encourage you to read through that letter to help you understand the financial policies that are, that go along with the financial report. We would be happy to answer any questions, if you have any, after you go through that letter, or after you go through the financial report, so we do encourage you to take a few moments to read that letter. So with that, I would open for any questions that you might have.
Okay.
Yes.
Are those procurement significant deficiencies? Are they in that big report? Are they specific?
We do not specify that.
What it was?
What they are in the report, no. We have them in our work papers, but they're not specified in the report.
And the corrective action, is it in this letter that's attached from David? Or is it? It'll be in the bigger report?
It's in the larger.
Okay, so we'll be able to watch, or watch for that when we get that report.
Yeah, and like I said, I'm happy to leave this report with you tonight if anyone would like to look at it this evening.
Otherwise, that specific, the main thing I'd say about that is that, number one, staff is reviewing the policy, but number two, perhaps more importantly, we're going to be presenting some recommended changes to the policy, primarily to clarify a lot of things that, you know, are kind of gray areas, and so my hope is that by bringing these amendments to you all, we can clarify some of those areas, so we will not have issues come up in the future.
Okay, that was my question next, was are there changes that need to happen, or we need to revisit the policy to make sure that it's something we can follow?
It's something we can definitely, it's something we can follow, but I think there were some areas where, you know, staff was with good intentions, they were doing one thing, and it didn't necessarily, it could be a different way. So, we try to take some of the gray out and make it so that we remediate those things.
Okay. Any other questions?
The process is placed upon this point forward. It's not, the audit, is it something that we let a later date approve, or are we just accepting the audit report? There's no action taken by the commission, is that correct?
Right, there's no official action to the audit. She presents as part of her policy.
No, they aren't accepted.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing here for it to accept her.
Yeah, there's nothing that, we've not, we've not previously done a motion to accept the audit.
Okay. Well, wouldn't be something we'd accept tonight anyway without reading through it, so, even, even the summary. So I appreciate that, and I can, I can understand and accept your apology, because I've been down that road myself, so, but having that as soon as possible would be very helpful. Thank you.
And I will, I'll leave those with David.
Any other questions or comments?
Thanks.
If none, thank you for your time, thank you for, thanks to Tammy and the staff, for your efforts, and go on for another year.
Thanks, Karen.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Drive safe going home.
Next on our agenda would be Douglas Road Design Services. We approved Douglas Road a few months ago to move forward, and I know that Scott and the staff went through submitting your proposals, so I'll let you take it from there.
Yes, we sent out requests for qualifications for design services to look at a bunch of different things with Douglas Road, and some of those being conceptually different road widths, bike paths, sidewalks. We heard that a lot from the folks, and staff has met with them and in front of you all during the public hearing. Based on qualifications, there was a number of submittals. The group decided, city staff group in the engineering department decided to start negotiation with WSP, engineering firm, for the design of this project. We've, over the last month or so, we've, we've had a lot of discussion and fees and kind of nailing down that scope on this, so we bring this for you, forward for you tonight to consider allowing the city manager to execute the agreement.
Do they have a timeline, estimate a timeline on the design work and construction?
Basically, a year for the final designs, right? It's about a year to get the final designs?
What we, what we are working towards is, is as we spoke to those residents as well, utility relocations and stuff through the federal, and understanding all that, and then being ready to construct next summer. They are new, WSP has not done work for the city.
Yeah.
They put together a really nice statement of qualifications, very interested in El Dorado. The project manager for this project is a former El Dorado citizen, so quite familiar with the area and the neighborhood.
Okay, any further question or comment from the commission?
Is this not something we're going to put out to bid?
Not professional services.
Not professional, okay.
So, for professional services, we do what's called a request for qualifications. Firms submit their qualifications without prices. Based upon a review of those qualifications, staff picks one or two firms generally to look into further, and then based upon that, they negotiate with the firm for prices for design services, or professional services. So generally, these would be things like engineering services, architectural services, legal services, anything that's professional-based, with the thought being that on professional services, you pay for, so you don't necessarily want to go with a low bid, because you might not get a level of service that you, you want to have. So, most communities do qualifications for professional services as opposed to bids.
Okay. Anything else? If are none, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve a consultant agreement between WSP USA Incorporated and the City of El Dorado, Kansas, for design services related to the Douglas Road Improvement Project, and direct the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further question or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. All right, away we go for Douglas Road. Next on our agenda would be a request for liquor tax program, Kids Need to Eat. I think some information's been placed in your packet, and Ms. Durant is not able to be here tonight, so if you have any questions for her, or for the program, for the applicant, which she is the applicant through Kids Need to Eat, we can, we can act on this, it's a thousand-dollar request, or we can table it for questions and comments to her, whatever the commission's desire. If we've got any questions or concerns that we need to have raised, or need to have discussed, then we may need to table it, otherwise. It is, application has drawn a parallel to domestic violence, which the money has some, has some obligation towards. Silish of the commission, any questions or comments or discussion?
So there's eight thousand left of that, that fund?
Yes.
Do we anticipate any money else asking?
I, I don't believe there'd be another group that would qualify at this time. I mean, they could surprise me, but typically, all the applications come in at the beginning of the year because they, they need to use the money as soon as we can get to them.
I think this is part of a larger conversation that needs to happen here in El Dorado. I'm not saying that this is, this is not the first year for this, this is the first year for them asking. Am I correct in that statement?
Yes.
Okay. I'm okay with it, I mean, with, I mean, the fund's there, what are we going to do with it? I made that money, and I've seen, I've, I don't have a problem with it. I think, I think, I would like a little bit more of a description of what's going on down there, maybe next year, where we refund it, but I think, again, this is a larger conversation that needs to happen.
I don't disagree with you, but I, I also think if we're going to start funding it and then ask for description or conversation next year, we probably, our foot's already in the pool, but we'll have to.
I think in previous years, the other groups didn't always provide a budget or a list of what they planned to spend the money on, and at some point, the commission gave them direction to provide that, and so if you wanted to do that, however you can.
Yeah, she certainly outlined here what they would, what it could be, could be spent on, not would be spent on, but, yeah, it is part of a larger conversation. I agree with that. Also don't know that it is outside of the bounds of the funds that.
Thought it says they're going to buy 200 backpacks with a thousand dollars. A thousand dollars will provide 200 weekend backpacks to children in our community. Oh, or, or could be used to offer fresh produce.
Or could be used to offer fresh produce. All money this facility allocates could be used to purchase food to pass out for free to children in our community, and then says, and then goes on to clarify, will, will provide, I guess I read that as, it could be used for food, but it, a thousand dollars would, would provide 200 weekend backpacks. I were kind of getting into the weeds, I mean, the thought, I'm not going to micromanage how it gets used, providing it's used for that general effort, so. Any other questions or comments? I entertain a motion. Or if you'd like to table it to have Ms. Durant here to talk, that would be a direction as well, whichever the commission, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to allocate the liquor tax money in the amount of $1,000 to the Kids Need to Eat program, and authorize the city manager to execute the appropriate documents and contracts for following recipients, and that these funds be distributed consistent with Kansas statutes. Do I need to read whoever it goes to?
No, actually, I'm sorry to do this, I meant to catch you before you read the motion. Can you pick out the, and the, with?
With the following.
Following recipients, because that, it, the motion.
Appropriate documents and contracts?
Um, yes. Go from contracts to.
And that, these funds?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move to allocate the liquor tax monies in the amount of $1,000 to the Kids in Need program, and to authorize the city manager to execute the appropriate documents and contracts, and that these funds are distributed consistent with Kansas statutes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Reports are on our agenda next. We'll start at the end.
I have none.
Okay.
I have none.
I have none. I haven't met yet, but I got a couple of things. So, we already asked about the auditing and purchasing. Are we starting to enforce law, Grass Heights Chief?
Yes.
Okay, there's quite a few on central land, man, that are getting a little out of control. I would encourage everybody, I know it's been raining, but I encourage everybody out there, mow your yard, please, and please don't shoot the grass into the street.
Yeah.
So, during the rain, we had the closing of Main Street at Post Road. Is that because the water's coming off that field? I don't know if he's answered that.
Yeah, it, it directly was coming off that field. The, the amount of fall, I mean, the amount of rain in that short duration just overwhelmed it, they're worn in Maine, specifically at Rice Park, that area. The river did get up, being as dark as it was and as deep as the water got, we couldn't tell if that side channel, the creek through Rice Park was backing up. I would assume it was, the river was backing up and then spilling into North Main as well as running across the crook.
Is there anything that we need to do there? Is there, I mean, is there something that we, that has needed to be done that just hasn't been done?
You know, when the, when, a number of years ago, there was some contouring done of the field along the, on, on off to the north, quite a ways, to help push it towards the Walnut River. It's been, I wanna say since 2005, since we've had an event that has shut down Main Street like that. So we've been pretty fortunate. There's not much we can do with the, the river still to banks.
Right, yeah, I mean, that's why I was just curious if there was something that needed to be done there. I know we've had some issues with water north of Post Road, kind of on that creek area, that, not that creek, that culvert that goes to the east, just past Post Road, that area. So I know we've, I just, I'm just trying to, I guess what I was looking at was just wanna make sure that there's not something ticking there that we've, we've been sitting, we've been sitting on for a while. The, how far out does our responsibilities go on 12th Street towards the lake?
To the, that would be the East Railroad overpass, the Eastern Railroad overpass.
Okay, so just because we have baseball field or softball fields out there, we don't have any responsibility for that?
In, in all of 12th Avenue along Vintage Place, Chris Edition is all in the county.
Okay, well, the reason I was asking is there's like three huge potholes heading out to the dam. And I, I mean, I've, you know, hit them all weekend, I was just wondering if we can, if we can talk to our counterparts about that.
Yep.
It's right basically in front of the old motor camp for the softball fields, there's three of them right along there, heading east on the east side, on the south side of the road. And last but not least, what's the story on our wonderful airplane on Central?
We'll be talking about it in executive session in a few minutes.
Awesome. That's all I got then.
Minnie, did you offer any also report on how our downtown drainage did during those screen event, past rain events?
It, it got very overwhelmed on, on Friday evening. Unfortunately, we had a large map, like a floor mat, that washed on down the alley and covered up an inlet for a while. So, it just sat right flush over the top of that thing, wasn't letting any water get into it. It, you know, I think it, it functioned okay, I mean, that was a lot of rain really quick.
Did we have flooding at first in, in Maine?
We did, we did, and we, pretty much everywhere, in a lot of areas, we hadn't seen flooding happen as well, so.
Okay. Well, next time, I hope we can try this without a floor mat over the drain, right? That's amazing. I don't have anything else. David, do you have a city manager report?
Just a couple of things, you, citizens will probably see, they may see them already, the playground equipment at Library Park as well as, well, at Library Park, it has been actually blocked off. And North Main Park, that playground will be blocked off here shortly. And what we're gonna do is we're going to, the park department, Parks Department was in the process of tearing down the Library Park equipment, but we're gonna put that one on hold temporarily. The barricades are up, so we ask that people not play on that equipment until it is removed because right now it is, it is unsafe. But what we're gonna do is we're going to move over to the North Main Park equipment, get that removed as quickly as possible so that the Tenscore project can commence without hindrance. And we're gonna take that equipment at North Main Park right now, we're gonna remove it and we're gonna store it temporarily, and then when we come back, there's some park equipment on the other side of Main Street, would be the west side of Main Street, we're gonna remove that at some point in the near future, and we're gonna put the current equipment that's in North Main Park there. Because the equipment on the west side is, is wood, it's, it's splintering and kind of a safety issue, and so we'll replace it with the current equipment in North Main Park because it's still in pretty decent shape. Meanwhile, the Library Park is going to get new equipment, and so once that is here, the park equipment's taken down, as well as the other equipment is taken down, we'll get all that put up and then we'll have, we'll have new park equipment for people to play on. So, that's coming soon, but in the meantime, we're gonna have that equipment, again, blocked off so that no one's playing on stuff that, that isn't exactly in good working order until we have that demolished. In addition to that, if you're out and about in North Main Park, you might see some trees that are marked with pink dots. We've gotten a lot of calls, pretty much every department's gotten calls about those trees. Those are not the trees that we are going to demolish as a result of the project, those are trees, the engineering department, actually, kind of funny story, they were out taking measurements for gathering information to, to get the site ready to go, and so in order to make sure they got every tree counted and measured and everything, they put dots on them. So those don't mean we're taking down all those trees, it just means those trees weren't counted.
It's chalk paint as well, so it's-
So, so it will, be coming off soon. We're hoping to minimize the number of trees that we actually do have to remove, and those trees that we can save, we are, we're, we're gonna plan to actually remove those and plant them in another location, either in North Main Park or other parks throughout the community. So, stay tuned on all that. Today was the final day for city commission filings. If you haven't heard yet, we have three spots and three people that will be on the ballot for the upcoming election. We have Commissioner Wilkinson, Commissioner Lewis, and former Commissioner Bill Young has put his name in for mayor, so we have those three names for three spots on the commission. Also, as a result of the flooding, you, the public may notice that sections of the bike pedestrian pathway are closed. We're gonna have that closed down as we get in there and clean up some stuff, we had some trees fall down and some mud that overtook the pathway, miscellaneous things like that that we need to clean up. So during that duration of time, the path will be shut down as we get that cleaned up, and then once it's, once it's fully cleaned up, we'll have it opened up as quick as we can so people can enjoy the bike path again. But we want people to be advised that if it is shut down, we ask that you not utilize the bike path because it is, it's not extremely dangerous, but we don't want anyone to get on the bike path and then be injured or be put in any danger. In addition to that, as the water is flowing much higher than normal, we don't want anyone to get, put, be put in any risk down there by the bridges. And then the final thing I have to say is about the spray parks, we have turned on the spray parks here recently, and unfortunately, we've had some situations where young folks have become somewhat innovative, and they have figured out that they can take bags or miscellaneous trash, wad them up and shove them into the drain inlets, and as a result of that, they block up the spray park and make a mini pool, which is kind of fun to play in, but what that does is it actually hinders the pump in these spray parks, and we actually came extremely close to having an automatic shutdown on one of our spray parks because it became extremely hot and nearly blew the pump. So, we ask folks that are playing in spray parks, don't cram anything in filters, don't, don't do anything that would block water flow, because that does have a tendency, well, it does make a fun pool temporarily, it does have the apparent effect of also causing stress on the motors that, that do that, and it can cause damage. So if the spray park turns off because a pump's not working, we will not be able to get to it and fix it as quickly as you might like, so please don't do that, and we'll keep those-
And if something like this were to continue because they still think it's cute seat, the water parks could be shut down?
That is correct. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, David. I guess I'll add to that, I am, as, as David mentioned, I am not signed up to run for a third term, so, and for those of you who are running unopposed, congratulations. And this will serve in a spot through, through the end of the year. Next on our agenda would be executive session. Make a motion to go into executive session, how much time do we need?
I'd say 20 minutes.
20 minutes, so let's go, coming back in-
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty?
Do we have to say, is she gonna be on the phone?
She'll be on the phone, it's in the motion.
So let's do seven thirty.
Ready?
Yep.
I move to recess into executive session pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception under KSA 75-4319B2 for the purposes of discussing pending litigation and to reconvene the meeting at 7:30 PM in the city commission room. The city attorney will be attending via conference call.
Second.
The move in second, any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero, we will retire to executive session and reconvene city commission meeting at 7:30 PM.